Time we're gonna swearing in of new county officials, but before that happens, I would like to take this time personally. To recognize our three outgoing elected officials and somebody get Denise please. It was appropriate, we're losing over a hundred years of uh of experience through uh today, so.
How many years were you at forty?
How many years have I been here? Forty-eight years and seven months today.
Forever.
She's got thirty-five, fifty-five years. Jerry, we came with a building.
We did Gregory. That guy go back a long way.
Daniel said, do they have tires when you? Well. Okay. Jerry, you started in the county when I was twelve months old.
Thanks Kyle.
You have a graciously served four generations of Schultz's. From my grandparents all the way to my kids. You've always brought dedication and professionalism to you, the office of treasurer and the supervisors. My first years on the board, when you'd walk in slapping your ruler, seemingly trying to whip the board into shape. It's my honor and privilege to congratulate you on your retirement and wish you the best with your family and especially those grandbabies.
Thank you so much. But it's time.
Should we take one of the chairs with you?
I got mistaken this morning. I wonder if they're getting rid of these options sometime.
I'll let you know.
Oh my gosh, thank you so much. Oh, that's beautiful. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We have a little box in our office that she kept the coins in that she asked her to have, so I don't know if they've already given it to you yet, but we've saved it for you if not.
I don't know if you want your ruler back.
Thank you so much.
Eric. For the past forty-two years, you've been a servant to the citizens of Dennison and Crawford County through your work with the Dennison Fire Department, Little Lake Baseball, DMU Board, Project Impact, a run at the State House, Dennison City Council, Crawford County Board of Supervisors, and all the years providing families, travelers, business people and presidential candidates a great cup of coffee. Uh you have always put the needs of the citizens of Crawford County first. Serving you the past eight years has been a privilege and an honor. Your experience and knowledge has brought that you brought every Tuesday will definitely be missed. Hopefully, we've been able to retain some of that. And I, you know, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for your years of service and congratulations on your retirement. Okay, well, we'll go, we'll move in with swearing in the new office till she gets.
That's my, my cue, my cue. Well, we can do this all as a group or we can do individual. If you want to take half a day, there's a bunch of you. I would say if you will, stand here and I'll face this way. That way your families and friends can see that you're actually not just lifting the words. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
In Crawford County, Iowa. As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Tell your daughter, she missed a hell of a ceremony.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I think we'll just roll with the continuation of the meeting. She said we'll just stop. Everybody had a chance? Okay. All right. Denise. Come on up here. Well, Denise, like I started earlier, we're losing over a hundred and plus years of experience to elected offices and such. This year, today, well, the end of this year, so I thought it was as board chair an obligation and a duty of mine to recognize those outgoing elected officials. So you worked here since nineteen eighty-seven as an elected official. A year after the space shuttle Challenger disaster, trying to put the reverence to it. You've been a caretaker of the county's vital documents since that time. We thank you. You've helped numerous citizens get married in this county. They're ready to come see you to get a marriage license.
Right.
Go on exciting vacations with passports, fishing trips, or even purchase their first house. It's always been a pleasure of mine to watch your kids grow up and work with your husband through the fire department and work with you here on the county level, so. Like to take this opportunity to say thank you on behalf of all the citizens that have walked through your door and of your office. You've always provided the highest level of dedication to Crawford County and the recorder's office, and I'd like to congratulate you on your retirement and wish you the best of luck in the future and with your grandbabies as well.
Can I get all three of the outgoing just to stand for a picture? You need me to, you need time powder.
Right there's the hundred years.
You want, how do you want us?
Just all three of you together.
You want us to? Thank you.
Facing the right way right now.
Boy, girl, boy, girl, let's go. Get it right.
Okay, big smile, bigger smile.
Thank you.
Thank you Denise.
Thanks. Thanks team.
All right. Everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Any conflicts of interest with the agenda? The eleven AM item, we have not received word back from Tom yet. Dwayne was expecting to have some correspondence by this time, but he has not got it, so we'll just put that on next week's agenda. Reading of the minutes.
December twentieth twenty twenty-two, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Cal Schultz chairman presiding, members present for Hayden Rossberg Schultz Coogan vote. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. Motion was made by Rossberg second by vote to approve the following resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four inspection of bridges involves, let's see, recalculation of safe load capacity of the structure showing significant deterioration of the structural components. Whereas the structural evaluation was evaluated and the recommendation to reduce safe load capacity that will be supported by certain structures. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors on the twentieth day of December twenty twenty-two as provided in sections thirty-seven or three twenty-one, four seventy-one, three twenty-one, four seventy-two, and three twenty-one, four seventy-three code of Iowa to erect and maintain weight limit signs in advance of the following bridges located on federal aid, farm-to-market and local secondary road systems. Voting I Hayden Rossberg Schultz and vote motion passed. A motion was made by Rossberg second and by Scoob to approve the CAT one fifty all-wheel drive motor grader from Ziegler in the amount of four hundred forty-three thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars for delivery fiscal year ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four pending budget approval motion passed unanimously. Louise Albreth, Veterans Affairs Director, give the board an update on Veterans Affairs. In a discussion was made with the board about the RFP for the city center and the electrical portion of the RFP needs to be updated. No action was taken at this time. A discussion was made with the board with Tim Whipple via Zoom about the hazardous liquid pipelines and home rule options. At eleven AM, a motion was made by vote seconded by Hayden to open the closed session pursuant to Iowa code twenty-one point five subsection one subsection C in regard to the hazardous liquid pipeline ordinance with Tim Whipple via Zoom. Motion passed unanimously at twelve twenty. Uh motion was made by Hayden seconded by vote to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously on motion duly seconded the board adjourned at twelve twenty-one. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday fourth of PM preceding the next meeting.
Okay, supervisors reports. Want to start, Jerry?
I didn't have any meetings or anything this week. I guess I did get a video from Wendy down at West Central Day Action talking about the need for childcare. In Iowa, how we just don't have enough of that of it and they talked about Sioux County and what they're trying to do to strengthen their childcare. And I guess I had, I only had one call this week and that had to do with the, the day it was snowing in Des Moines. But I had someone call and say, hey, there's a deputy sheriff out driving along the highway and he doesn't have his lights on, so I just called and said, Jim. Hey, it looks, he doesn't, who isn't using their lights? So that, that was the only calls I had. The road.
What is, what, what kind of, if you don't mind, ma'am, what, what does Sioux County have?
Actually, they bought a house that they had people that would do in-home daycare, but they didn't want it in their home, so they had a house that the county apparently ended up with and they must have did some rehab on it and put childcare in this, this rehab house. That was one of their solutions, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
That was an idea. Funny we talk about that because I then went out to our school board meeting last week of daycare that we're gonna start losing students because of that. And actually, I'm trying to get the school talking to purchasing the old doctor's office or a main street and have an agreement with somebody. The school don't want to necessarily run the daycare, but they would maybe provide the building for the daycare.
For a dollar.
Something of that nature.
That's a great idea.
And then maybe if we have to pay somebody to run it or, but I.
I think it could be the committee to put together in time to do that.
Yep.
You know, have a group.
Do they personally have to have a certificate?
Yeah, you're, you're. Wondering if you can work with Wendy and get that all put together, Don.
She can.
She can. Well, she can if she's quick.
You gotta wait, get on it.
Tell me to, to forward that video to you guys.
Forward it to me and I'll be glad to follow up on it. Okay.
Well, and they, they also said, you know, they need, the people need to know, people that would be thinking about it, they need to know what an essential service that is.
Absolutely. And the, the real waiting list problem down at Imagination Station is they just don't have the staff to cover the shifts and the times and.
Well, yeah, it's, it's kind of a snowball effect. So Charter Oak don't have anybody, so they move their kids over to Dennison.
Yep.
That overtaxes that.
Right.
Or up to Sluswick or Manila where, you know, I think both of them are pretty much full already and they've just opened, so.
And after school is an issue for a lot of working parents that, yes, just great. And the other thing that I hear a lot of is when school is closed, it's just the work. That is a huge problem if you don't have teenagers that can stay home or a grandmother that's retired. I'll throw that in there um to.
Are you really retired?
Well, you know, it seemed to be at will for everybody, but it's all good. I'm honored to be able to do it, but I feel bad like for the people. So I think it's really something we need to follow up on, so I'd be glad to take that over more than glad to, so no worries. Well, I see.
That's.
That's it?
That's it for me.
Eric. Region twelve has their first person to file for getting money to do something in the new area.
Oh, in the, in the locker meat processing?
In the process thing there, so they're still in the process of writing up applications and stuff, so there's, but they're getting it done. It'll be interesting. They're in, they're in good shape. I don't know how long they're gonna stay on with the region eight. The stuff they do for the western Iowa. Western Iowa thing they do down there with, with the. Workforce, workforce development. They're having a problem. The two gals that are supposed to approve this thing with the state and get a story, they're screwing things up real bad and and a lot of people are ready to walk off and walk off. They're getting tired of it. They're, they're having region people do some of the work and stuff like that and are, and are not getting compensated. I mean, they're getting, they drive to a meeting, they get compensation for that, which is fine. It's, it's the other stuff they ask us to do. They wanted just to go for five weeks. Half a day in Des Moines. And, and you know, help get certified and stuff to be in this stuff. I says, you're asking me to take five weeks off. Half days off, five and, and drive to Des Moines and back. I said, you, you, you're never gonna get people who want to sign up to do this thing. Why the big open spot in here? Things are not gonna.
Can't they zoom them? Can't they zoom that?
They can zoom part of it, but we got a lot that don't, don't zoom in this area. I mean, you go south of here and they don't.
They don't show?
No.
I think I remember you saying that before.
And, and so it's, it's, it's gotten to be a kind of a fight and region twelve is, is ready to walk, not buckle. When they're, when five comes up, they're, they're not interested in buying. They're spending more money to take care of their money and make sure.
They're the fiscal agents, right?
They say, well, he's getting to the point where he feels like, go find someplace else. So it's an issue that's gonna be there. Many of the same issues that they're dealing with junior, you know, their workforce development. Kids, workforce development is being thrown in there and all that stuff, so you'll see a lot of that stuff duplicating coming out and it's it's statewide. There, there. You've talked to some of the people from other parts of the state and they're not real happy, so. Not, that's all I had last week.
Jean?
Well, last week was a blur to me, but I don't believe I had any meetings. Actually, I had a few phone calls about someone that was interested in looking at working in the city center. I wanted to make sure they didn't miss that. And so it's a Hispanic individual that got wind of it through doing some work over here, so. I said, well, would, would then welcome you, so I'll try. I said, you gotta listen to the radio, read the paper. I said, we're trying to, and they are on the list with the city, so I said, that's gonna be your best way to find out, I hope. That we've decided to maybe do something like that, uh, because it's kind of a word of mouth thing, I think, right now at this point, but I'm very anxious to keep that process moving. But as far as meetings, really not a whole lot. I did notice on our claims that we had a payment to the Crichton Center. Are we doing a paper service with them or why would we pay them for ten hundred dollars? Because that's one of the.
What department was it?
Oh, page five? I get, I look, I was gonna highlight it.
That's probably a DHS case.
I think it is DHS. Yep. It was under the DHS rent.
That's why. Our DHS department.
And they'll pay you that back, will they?
Yep. No, not that one?
No.
But is that, because it's, it says shelter services.
Right.
So that comes out of Nate's budget?
No, it comes out of DHS's budget. We did a budget amendment for approximately, what, ten or fifteen thousand dollars?
Okay.
To fund that because we were getting a lot of DHS cases.
I'll have to look at that a little closer when budget ten comes through. I just kind of.
I think it changed when Nate kind of took over, right? He wasn't. I think our past operation officer kind of did the paperwork differently and Nate says, well, you're DHS kid, why is it coming out of my budget?
Because it's Ball County funds, that's why.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
And the reason that that stuck out for me is Crichton Center has come to the mental health on several occasions asking for big dollars like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and different numbers like that. Or, or take anything that we would give them and it's always been a choice of the board to that, that's not one of our core or essential services that, so I just didn't know, you know, how that was working, so I could get a little more educated in why thirteen hundred dollars DHS from Crawford County, just, you know, a little, little whatever. Um, but that being said also, and then this morning, I just kind of took it upon myself to highlight and figure out how balanced we are with assigning things. So I'll kind of pass around my version of what I think. Ty's a little high, so I tried to figure out something he might would want to give up. See you next year. So just.
Do you have your picture? You want to take pictures in there or not?
Let me.
Let's take them next week and I'll dress up. So just kind of a little, I'm the master of, I don't have enough different color highlighters for y'all. I think it'd be nice to kind of move that one, especially for the new ones coming in. Shares, sharing is caring, so. I'd be glad to switch around if somebody wants something, except I won't get rid of mental health, I just. Pretty much.
Is that the folder?
Am I?
Oh, no.
It's not gonna go around the table.
Not sitting over there, is it?
Well, that's a new place to hide it, Kyle.
I didn't put it there.
You know, today's my husband's seventy-first birthday, so.
It'll be birthday.
Trying to figure out a way for two days after Christmas to make him feel special. His mother used to just wrap up a pair of shirt and pants for each one of the boys and tell Jerry that was for his birthday too, so. He's got scars. I don't even buy his present until after Christmas because he begs for it on Christmas. Like, no. Friend of Eileen sent him a Christmas card and said, and as for other years, this is also certain type of birthday card.
That was one of one of my best friend's birthdays and she, first thing she said is, do not wrap up one big present.
Here's a pencil if you wanna erase something.
Well, how, can I ask you a question? How much do we actually do like on insurance and the HIPAA committee? The things where the chair.
Yeah.
Courthouse and annex, sort of big chore with any of that?
Depends on the year.
Right, exactly. To be fair to you.
I'm good.
They got your name and address already, Chris.
Fair boards know anything that happens real often, so whoever's cut that.
How much do you do on hungry?
We do it all.
Quarterly meeting?
Yeah. Quarterly meeting? I mean, it's, no, no, I like, I only went to two meetings a year. He had one of the meetings was, which was just.
Just engineered.
What's that?
Bring her here already.
Flowers, so.
Jerry, vote.
I'll give up this one.
Really just a maneuver management.
Which one's the short?
Well, why we're talking about that, you know, we just got.
Yeah, this one in RJ.
All right, there we go. Helping you out. So then erase your ten and put a nine.
Playing very much, is it Jerry? You said you don't even know if you ever met him?
No.
Because there's a bunch of.
I think that this would be a good year. To reach out to me, you know, if if it's a committee that you sit on and there's really nothing going on. Maybe we could reevaluate. I don't know.
So you're really childhood and de-cap, they go together, right?
Kind of, yes, yeah, but somebody, I'd be, I I don't know if I need to.
I think, didn't he get that?
Mobar?
Mobar get that because he he was on that for a long.
I want it now. Although, and it goes together with mental health, though, you know, they kind of all answer to Dawn a little bit, but I'm more than if somebody wants that.
No.
I am a sharer from the word go. So he's, David would like to take that, because I know he knows Molly and the net. I passed my pencil for this. Didn't highlight it, if you want to re. Go with any way out.
What the? Do you have anything, Ty? You know, actually. The only thing I actually worked on and just was talking to some people about. Government budget. And they actually suggested, and then I seen that actually on Fox News is running of all things or Fox Business. Going back and referencing your eighteen and nineteen and twenty budgets really hard because you did all these extra monies that have got thrown at us in the last two years. Some people became dependent upon them and you probably need to make sure that fiscally we aren't. Because ours is always separate anyway. Yeah, it's separate, but I mean. Yeah, I appreciate that aspect, but our development of our budget has always been. That money's in a different account that already earmarked for stuff, so we just always, we've worked our budget up according to what we had to work with in front of us, but it's not. But it's just something to make sure that we're looking at what what our budgets were before that. And see how much we have increased in the two years of chaos. Yeah. You see what I mean?
I've only been here since the chaos, so.
Well.
I don't know any other way.
We always get the previous years anyway to compare to, so I mean, I just something that I I just talked, I've been talking budgets with a couple of people that were in different branches of government.
And I'm glad you brought that up too. My sister-in-law has been a supervisor. She's not running again in Johnson County. And they had over thirty million dollars in ARPA funds and then the city had money and the school had money. They are having a hard time even, you know, they've redone a park and did some rehab at their courthouse.
Hard time spending.
Yeah, they're, well, they, and there's been so many like nonprofits just coming and just filling the court, their rooms with, they need the money and. It's a really long story of.
I'm glad we didn't have a lot then. Relatively.
Thirty million dollars.
Is what they have asked for?
No, that's what I'm saying. They got just the count of just Johnson County.
But it's restricted by what to up to what the code said it was.
Well, but they loosen that a little bit.
I understand.
And they've even gotten creative on how to put not pay for something that they would normally play out of the general fund and then use ARPA funds for that. Because I'm like, oh, you guys got more than ten million. You can't really do that. At a kitchen table in my ha- at my house, you can talk about the creativeness of how they had them.
Kind of show creative spending.
I just thought that was an interesting conversation they had.
Yeah, Jesus.
I know, and then the city got in the millions and the school got, you know, twenty million and. So they might.
What else did you have, Ty? Not not really. I mean, it was, you know, like the Christmas week, so there just wasn't a whole lot. I didn't have any meeting. No. Well, I really didn't have anything either. Talked to Paul a couple of times about roads and how they were being managed and I think we dodged a hell of a bullet with the the blizzard.
I think we did too.
You know, the road crews. Did a good job with what they had to work for. I did notice and I commented to Paul about it, how nice that was, but our truck driver, Tony. After he runs his route, he hopefully he stops and then he puts a deal on Facebook telling how the road conditions and stuff of that nature on his route.
Yeah, that is.
I thought that was pretty, pretty nice of him.
So what what does he put that under on Facebook? His own personal?
I I think it's his own personal. I'd have to look, yeah. I think it was his own personal.
What's his last name?
Keiner. Anthony Keiner.
Dude, that'd be almost kind of well, I should be.
Well, I just was thinking that too, because it could also be detrimental to us also. Tell you, roads are good, none of them are not. Well, your guy said it was good, so.
Right. No, that, yeah, but the other side of it is, it'd be, I think it's more of a.
Nice courtesy deal today. I run the roads and his was pretty generic. I mean, he said, I run the roads, there's no drifting on, there's patchy. Ice on spots, just be careful.
Somebody to listen to it closely, but if you do in a certain area.
Yeah.
Tell them who's there.
Well, that's right. You've been in this long enough, Jerry, know that, no, no business. No good deed goes unpunished, so. Yeah, I think our road crews did a good job, but a lot of new ones out there again. While some of them, they blade operators, I don't know if they've ever seen a snow. We haven't really had one for. Three years since March of nineteen, I think, you know, was the last big snow we had, you know? We've lost a lot of senior blade members since then, so. That's how you don't develop them just over one night, so. Does that cover all the bases then? I think then it's a little closer to where everybody's got something to do.
Otherwise, got nothing to report and so.
You know, after a year of sitting here, I'm really gonna have to get creative.
You might be first someday. I think I'll pass this. I think Elder Bridge is on the agenda, correct?
Yeah.
So I think I'll pass. I think there's one here for everybody to look at while she's talking.
What else is there? Not so much. Stream cold and.
So they do have their calendar reported here so that when, I think that's one of those.
We'll share.
I did get questions asked of me about the pipeline from people throughout the holiday, just asking what's going on. Then I got asked to speak at Rotary Thursday, so I'll probably.
In this, this.
What? Missed the. Miss Paul's party.
Jerry, where's this article in the newspaper?
I can go wherever you want it to go.
Rotary Rotary's very community minded. They've got questions about the pipeline hours, so I thought I'd.
Oh, yeah, that's just.
Terry?
I don't, I hate. We have three newspapers for Thursday, so we can put it in all three of those. We'll probably put it on the website for her.
Website is good.
Uh, it's probably not. And to do like workforce. Or something that it could, you just don't know. I mean, you know, you don't know.
Who's trying to get it there? Because people.
I mean, if you want it.
And did ask me.
We can put it on our bulletin board, of course, but.
That makes us a lot thinner when I pass up.
Here's the, here's the.
Thanks.
I won't be here much longer, so bring somebody else in the Charlotte. This will be tough. I want that shirt. I want Jerry's shirt back. I've never sat on these spots and I don't want.
You haven't? I don't want to do with that.
Someone's gonna want to.
So you're either third base or first base.
Right.
At the at the blackjack table. I'm gonna take that one. I'm gonna take my, that's why.
That'll be handy. Maybe put David jeans by you. Let me leave a couple rulers, smack.
Sure, you claiming those aren't, we Dave up to, we don't have a choice being one of South Dakota. I would prefer Jared's. Oh, I already claimed that.
You would not like that, because anytime they need to know about a road, you've got to turn around and point that out to me where it's at. And you're responsible for writing on the dry board. If we need notes written, then you'd have to go up there and do that. It comes with a lot of responsibility.
The can of the gopher chair, I guess. So I would take yours. There you go. Your road already cleaned out, so you can throw some stuff in there. Well, we'll have to pass this baton to you. I don't think it works, but it's in there. Couple times since I've been here and no, we're adding a response.
We updated the batteries recently, actually.
Okay. They'll come up here with guns drawn. How you gonna die of COVID?
A donut.
A donut.
Donut. Oh, speaking of which, Eric, god dang it, Eric.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of cupcakes over there.
Nothing's over there.
So you doing on a horse, huh? I, well, I don't know. I'm guessing skiing in snow will be. My boy went yesterday and they were worried if I ninety was gonna be open, but they made it, so.
You were afraid of what was gonna be open?
I ninety. I can feel my blood sugar rising. It don't hurt. It's the end of the year.
That's right.
It don't hurt.
You start over next week.
Yeah. Will Rick prepare for? You been around or not?
He apparently is. He went out.
You get your new pair of coveralls and muck boots for Christmas?
That's not happening. He actually came in the house and had me crying before we left, so he said, how many years has it been? Forty-eight? And I'm like, oh, don't talk about it. My kids are called and they're cats and. Onto the next chapter. Oh, you were talking about, you were talking about Denise and chat, you know, the year after Challenger and stuff. I was home on maternity leave and watched that thing blow up.
I was walking down the school hallway when I was in eighth grade and they pulled us all into the classroom so we could watch it. Actually, we're, a lot of them were watching it just because of the nature of the first teacher going in the in the space.
Where were you? New York City building. I was chairman of the utility board and we were having this and one of the gals came in and says, you might want to turn on that TV in here. We sat there for like two hours.
That was a weird one too, because I was born in concrete and V ninety-two Todd and Tyler, so you never knew if they were bullshitting or not. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not the new story, she tuned it. No, so we just like. And we went to our next job and everybody was like, oh, that was the end of the work for the day. Yeah, Challenger was quite a.
Yep, I lived in Emporia, Kansas.
Where?
Emporia, Kansas. Jerry, we lived in every town that there was an IBP plant in at that point in time. I think I was nineteen times. Yeah, I might have exaggerated, but. I used to have it down to a science hall where I moved from where to where to where to where, but lived in Amarillo, Texas twice.
That's over Amarillo by morning.
I know, and I sang that song many a time and we're driving home with a bunch of kids in the backseat screaming, yelling and.
Just what happened.
Trying to block them out.
I came, I was out of meetings with Smithfield and and Parks Livestock a week before and had to come back. And I came through, stayed the night. Parks was actually a golf tournament, so it was kind of fun, but. And I got back to Arkansas because I had meetings with Tyson that day. And one of the guy, there was two guys down from from Wilson that were down there talking to my trailers and I was, we all Peter fixed for Tyson. So I was stopping in there.
Shelley, Shelley makes. He's the one that makes.
Michelle, Michelle, excuse me, Michelle.
Michelle, you're Michelle.
We gave the right, we gave the vice president a Wilson trailer back, the ride back, that we stayed an extra night down there because all the planes got canceled. I was staying anyway because I had late meetings that day and so I gave gave a ride back to the vice president's livestock trader production. Back to Sioux City, so he paid for all my hotels down there. For dinner, we went out to a fancy restaurant. And they paid for that. We had a pretty good time. Kelly was quite scary. You're pretty good, Dan. Even though he had a donut already, you might want to have it.
I'm sorry, man.
That's okay.
Does he make some?
Yeah.
Is that hot?
Yeah.
It was.
Was it?
Yeah. For god's sake.
He's gonna have to be the coffee supply, I think. I drink the greatest majority.
I probably didn't write my name on my cup.
As I was writing them up yesterday and trying to think back to. You always had your commercial on the radio, always had how you, your coffee was drowned, you drowned it because you learned that in college. Always think you weren't drowning in a little something extra too while you're drinking coffee.
Out there in Colorado, yeah.
How many actual presidents went through your establishment?
Oh, Christ, I can, the goddamn list was just. I started writing them down here a couple of years back. I mean, there was some, I had Mitt Romney there. He was there twice. He bought the breakfast for everybody. For the second year, he was trying to do it and he was way early in doing it. And then Jesse Jackson was here from the Iran. And I had Governor from. New Mexico.
Bill Richardson?
Yep, I had him at the restaurant.
Barack Obama stopped, didn't he?
No, I had family.
He stopped at this, the ice thing.
He stopped the ice thing.
There's a, there's a story for you. I digress on this one. We were, we're hauling gravel on Woodbine Pit that day. All the county trucks were hauling gravel. We could tell, you know, we knew it was coming, but all day Secret Service was on Highway thirty checking all the bridges and everything. So we all just got loaded. We're coming off the scale. State trooper pulls in blocks us. One of Jerry's favorite Dallas city area graduates, Danny Tonight gets out. Now the truck locked up the trooper. Starts a conversation. About what's going on. And he, you know, trooper proceeds to tell us all that, well, the president's coming through and Danny says, well, who does he think he is? Thinks he's pretty special, huh? And then he's like, be hell of a day to rob a bank and what, so I wouldn't. You would try get away with it.
Same story with Mary's, Mary's mother. And he was sitting there and he was right, taking notes down stuff, but I can't remember who was on the diet, but I laugh at this. He says, uh, sat down. He said, he sat down and he says, man, he says, what do you think going on here? Somebody's gonna get shot or something?
Yeah.
What's your name?
You obviously.
He's just.
My Barack Obama experience was the Democrats who supposed to post this thing that I'm.
We always.
Two ladies from California, they're. They're posting in California and they're all about it. We're all in this room. They're like, come on, get your. Hell, he ain't going anywhere. I'm not, I'm not. And he gets elected president. Can I not pick a person right? I'm like, I'm gonna kiss it.
Final title. We took a moment or two to digress about how many presidential candidates were going through crogs over the years and. Yeah.
Oh, stories.
Going down memory lane with.
Yeah.
Who are those from?
My kids and my grandkids.
Oh. Those grandkids of yours are so thoughtful. Because that's six months old.
Very nice, yeah, yeah. So how many presidents?
Oh, Christ.
Candidates, candidates.
Candidates, yeah.
Lots of candidates. Since he's had it? Yeah. Thirty-six. Oh, my God. Congratulations to both.
Well, the president, the president, he was there and and that's when they got that big picture in the paper down Omaha. And my phone, it was on, it was on the weekend of the New Year. But he did, he had made a stop at the restaurant earlier and then they put it in the paper down there. I must have had forty phone calls. For people who were friends of the family and stuff down Omaha. You're standing with the wrong guy. But, you know, he was in there.
I'll sell anybody a cup of coffee. Where's your coffee? I'm here. Yeah, yeah. They they made the Omaha paper only because you're in Nebraska.
There's a lot of us Nebraska.
Well, let's try to stay on point. Yeah, I don't have a whole lot.
We're not doing a good job today.
So.
We're.
So, yeah, it's that kind of thing between Christmas and New Year's where.
I'll try to plan a birthday party.
Yeah.
Try and get them kids to come back again.
Sorry, I said, right, yeah, we, we shipped everyone off this morning, so that was kind of chaotic for a couple hours. They're all on the road now, so it was a great weekend.
We know important blankies got left behind.
I'm sure a lot of them. I'm sure a lot of it did, but that's fine, it was a reason to go visit. Uh, yeah, I really don't have a whole lot, the two contract projects, head and the lettings, uh. We, uh, a little bit of snow stuff, nothing too serious.
All we got is a bullet.
We did, yeah, yeah, cold temperatures been, they were a little bit of a bugger last week, so.
Could have been cold, a lot worse, cold temperatures in Alaska.
Yeah, yeah, that was thirty-eight degrees in Denali the same, you know, last year, thirty-eight below, minus thirty-eight. Up in Alaska, as I told the guys, I said, well, it's fifteen below here, but it's thirty-eight below somewhere else, so, yeah, we, we were pretty fortunate. I think our thirty-seven below, or our fifteen below, when you go to Texas and they're close to zero, I think we were in better shape because they're not ready for, they're not ready for forty. Well, a lot of truckers, you know, I mean, you know about that, you know, they're far from the south, they get into this weather up here and they're not ready for. There's trucks litter in the shoulder. Yeah, yeah, and, and, uh, diesel pickups that weren't quite ready for that, so. No issues other than, oh, it's still, so, you know. On a good useful campaign stuff, for old election signs, if you cut them up, put them right on your grill and zip time, then.
I gotta hold my receipt, sorry.
But, uh, yeah, so no, no real issues, uh, we're having our luncheon, uh, luncheon on, uh, this Thursday, so.
I won't be off, I got an appointment.
Again, I. Yeah, yeah, sorry, no, no problem, we, uh, it just didn't work, I was too cold, miserable, bad weather, so we just postponed it and decided we'd do it this Thursday. So it'll just be a luncheon, eleven-thirty to one o'clock, so please pass away this appreciation. I will, I will, yes. And, um, so, yeah, so that, that, that is going on and getting ready for budgets, uh, working with Terry and Michelle, they're getting some stuff together, so. We'll see where all that lands, uh, and then I had a request from, um, gentleman, this is, this is by, uh, Garrett's. They have their, their large shed and their grain operation here north of Dow City between Dow City and. Cadillac Arts Road Street. Cadillac Arts over here, well, they're selling this to a ag entity or nanny group that wants to build a seed chemical facility there. And so this little piece of ground right here is still county right of way. Not sure why they did this on the Kentwood Road, but when they graded this in the early seventies, these little triangles. Okay, they, they acquired these as right of way, okay, and so this is, this is still county right of way, so if it's sold. That's still county right of way, so they asked whether we would be, uh, agreeable to vacate. And so, and I said, well. And then we just maintain our thirty-three into the. Thirty-three and fifty, yeah, we just have our standard right of way there, we might lop a little bit of the corner off for sight distance, but. I don't think it's all that bad, even if we do the standard right of way, so honestly, I don't know why they did that, trying to think of why.
I thought when I graded that, them roads came to squares, huh?
Yeah, and they just left it.
Originally, they probably.
They, they might have.
I don't know.
They might, yes, yeah. But you love going south of town and south of Charter Road, you probably end up with some of the same things, south of Charter Road, but like the gravel pile and some of them.
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't looked at those areas, yeah. Because there's, it's even funky there where Staley's is, you can see where the old road is. Yeah.
Yep.
So. Yeah, I'll bet it's the same. But they've been cropping pretty much.
I, I would say if we don't have a, if we, if it wouldn't be feasible for us to have a gravel pile there, I'd say let's get rid of it.
Yeah, it's not really that big.
It don't look that big, no.
No. So if the, if the decision is yes, it's okay, the surveyor that's doing the survey for this is gonna generate the description for us.
Okay.
Because he's gonna, I said, well, there's the deal, I said, if we decide to do it, you get us the description, we'll put it in the, uh, vacation notice. We'll go ahead and do a public notice, so next week I can come back with a notice of public hearing and have a vacation, so. Basically nothing, it don't serve any value to us at this point, so I don't see. Tax rules.
But, but just questioning on the south.
So. So, yeah, you know, so you go through the process, now, we could do that, it's just, you know, uh, he, you know, that was the, the comment from the person requesting this. And I said, well, I've kind of known about these little anomalies here. It's not a huge tax thing, you know, no, the time and effort to get a description and to do all the work probably outweighs that, but at some point in time, it should or could be cleared up. But I said, we, we really haven't done anything unless somebody's asked for it, that we could. Unless they got somebody doing it for us and we get back on the tax rule. And there'll be a business there with.
Right.
Yeah. So, but I know, I thought the same thing, Kyle, but, but really, then you gotta, you gotta go out and do all the survey, you gotta get everything, you know, it just takes time. You'll take a day or two to survey just to get all the information, to see how it all fits together, well, they're already doing all that out there for this one, so.
Dan, good point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sound good to me.
Okay, sound good.
Get it done, cleaned up.
Get it cleaned up and get a, and get a business out there, so, yeah, so I think it's a good deal.
Good, so, yeah.
Okay, well, again, great work going with both of you. Well, yeah, awesome. Made the future hold all good things for you, so, yeah, it'll be a kind of a, a change, I'm sure, you know? Not having to think about what you're gonna do every Tuesday. We're coming here. And, you know, the thing is, is most people don't realize.
We just have the holidays, no, it's more than, it's more than one day a week.
It really is, I mean, you, you, you get lucky, you find out that there are a ton of things, especially, especially when you start and you go right into pledges, so.
Yeah. Well, my first day.
Which is in two weeks.
You're welcome.
Which is.
I think my first experience with fall was, I had people calling about roads and it was real wet that January, so I called all of them, I said. And he said, how about if I just meet you at the county shop in Dow City, so I did and out we went, we drove, we drove and drove out.
Yeah.
It's helpful to see.
We spent, we spent a couple, a half a day out.
Yeah, we did.
Looking at roads, yeah, I, anybody who ever want to do that.
I will someday.
My first ride in the country with, with, with Chuck. Chuck. And we buried, we buried his little.
Stuck with Chuck.
And then he, he pulls out, he says, well, here, just get on the microphone, you know, so he called him in, he said, no, I'll use my cell phone.
We're not gonna call that in, are we?
And then he answers the phone and he starts in before he get, what the hell are you doing there, you know? Five o'clock, damn it, we're off, we're done, you know? Chuck, man, he took it, you know?
Happy New Year.
Thanks. Last half of the day.
I forgot.
Last half today, kind of something you have to do.
Yeah.
Forgot, mentioned how your, with your project impact with the levees, how you were instrumental going to Washington DC and securing funds for that.
Yeah.
You're on that.
There's the guy, there's the, he was on history.
You could see it's somebody that all do, that's my favorite.
Don't call. That's only one of them. That's a, that's a real story.
Most people, he was down in Dow City, they're pretty good.
No one.
Two machines.
The way we went at it, you gotta.
Really working.
Paul, that was because of the Donner East Festival.
Oh, man, I don't know.
That I had his daughter, she was up here for that and he gave me his car, I got to talking to him, so maybe.
Yeah.
The party down there. He worked, he's senior vice president with, uh, P D P.
Oh. Yeah, we're, we're like way ahead of schedule.
We are.
Yep, which is.
This way, no supervisor reports.
Unbelievably early, so, uh, calls went quick.
Yeah, that was another one that went quick.
Jody, a chance?
No.
Nor.
Yeah.
Wanted to find out more information about the Kingwood deal.
Oh.
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 Sounds good.
That's why we have a public hearing.
I'm assuming, yeah, she'll be Zoom, Jody will be Zoom.
Yeah. And the hearing can be till when they hear.
Do we have our packet, I don't, I don't think I signed them in the management thing.
Yes, Eric, thank you very much. I saw the elder bridge committee. Jerry.
Yes, those are.
Oh, the new one.
That's yours? Hopefully there's some contact involved here.
Yep, there is.
Do we have the names of one of these?
Right here, right here, he has one.
Okay.
You got one of those? No, so who else need it, Dan need one?
I got this, thank you.
I don't either.
We traded off a few extras, I didn't realize I was gonna have ten committees since I got the chairs.
We get a few more.
Handing you a couple more.
We're sharers up here.
Sharing, sharing jeans, uh. I think.
If you're sharing, I'll get a chair.
Share or share.
So did we give, uh, decap to Dave and? Decap and?
Mm-hmm, okay. Hayden and Molebauer, right? That's, so Dave's the alternate on that one? Looks like.
Re-highlight.
We have to do a stamp on this thing.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So now, one, two.
Yep, you sure do.
We just put that in the paper and on the radio.
Well.
I've got it both ways.
Video and the paper.
And, and the, uh, website, the.
Oh, yeah.
Gentlemen's interest.
I was kind of.
How much does that pay, because I'm sure that'll be the question.
Present week commissioner, there's somebody that'd be, at least that is, health or half as good as anybody could.
The first league commissioner that actually.
Understood what.
Yeah, it's a, a valiant effort towards, I.
Well, I mean, he, he did a great job, I thought.
You know, if it was, I don't, I never heard of one of those, this one guy's actually booed, you know?
No, and I'm not, I don't want to take anything away from the past week's commissioner, but this one, when he sent a registered letter and said you had to have something done by June fifteenth or we're gonna take care of it, he did.
Yeah, he did, you're right, I had more than once had assessments turned over to me to collect with property taxes.
You know?
I never knew any of the week commissioners, so I just thought he did all the.
For years.
It's not both ways.
Habitual offender. Don't hear complaints about it anymore, do you?
Nope, I remember two that I, two different ones that I collected where we had to have them sprayed, so.
Okay, I think it looks pretty fair, we've got Dozer with six, Molebauer with five, Rosberg has eight, but two of those are duties he does as chairperson, which will only be like quarterly or something. Hayden has five and Schultz has six. That's about as spares you can get. Okay, I think this should be the final version.
Thanks, Gene.
You're welcome, thank you.
Did you give that to him, did he get a copy of it, did you get a copy of it?
Oh, yeah.
Well, print it up, kind of, because mine is kind of.
All hacked.
Yeah, it's all hacked up, I didn't even ask if I could write on it.
There's a bunch of them.
Email it out.
I have a print up.
I think this should be, uh, pretty final.
From the air.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm doing, I'm doing.
When you want compensation board on the agenda, Mark.
We'll do, uh, we can do that next. Should we wait to, should we wait to the second meeting of the year, well, a lot of that stuff next week goes quick, so.
We need to budget, so.
Yeah. We put our next week's agenda.
It might take three or four weeks to get it finished, so.
We do have that.
Which one? Which one?
You write that all the way through.
Yeah.
Hey.
I think, I think I saw one five generation family and that was the, the Addams from Rover at, uh, Vale.
Oh, sure.
Yep, there was old Floyd and Argy, the kid, I mean, it just trickled down.
I'm trying to think, I don't, yeah, I'm pretty sure all my great grandparents were.
Yep, I remember.
Passed before you had that office.
I remember where you.
Yep. I don't need it anymore. Yeah, but I got, I got it in there, but I didn't get it.
Put families together. Reminds you, so and so then you find out their sisters or their. How that all works.
Denise was very married when she was, they got married, no.
No. Now, when she started.
Got married and adopted two kids.
I want to be here, I graduated high school, I've been married.
I was my dream, I think.
It's your first. I was eighteen years old.
Yeah.
So when did it take, when did, uh?
Oh.
What's his face? Yours not over yet, you don't get it, you don't get it, I even flagged that.
No, I haven't seen that.
Let's see, that would have been around.
I gotta, I'm trying someone else.
Was it?
Because I took, I took over.
I'm not training, I'm not, I'm not training.
If you're sitting in this chair, Craig, and you see something like this, you're supposed to pass the chairperson on your shoulders, they assign on front.
Big job.
The chair comes with responsibility.
And then Judy got it for me.
Right?
And the auditor's not sure.
My, my, my vice chair is batting third base, so I'm pretty.
I'm sitting over there. Yeah, I'm going back to my, my original.
Your original.
Yeah, he shouldn't have to.
Or have to tap anybody?
No, or Dave will be between you two, that'll.
No.
That's his own seat. It'll be good.
We'll get you in the shade.
He can give it his all, and there you go.
Geez, the poor guy, he'll change his mind. You Republicans and a Democrat like that. You guys will have him straightened out by the end of the first year.
I think he's a Republican.
There's like three, four generations built into him of, you know, Dave, it's gonna take a bigger, bigger timeframe than that if they want to try to convert him.
We're just gonna hold him to that conservative part.
He's gonna hold.
We're just gonna hold him to that conservative part of his campaign speech.
It's one thing I will say, this board is very nice to be non-partisan, non-political.
That is, that will be years, that is.
Everybody got the best interest of taxpayers in mind when they're sitting there. The only time I've ever seen any was during COVID, you know, if we should shut down or if we should stay open or mandate this or that.
That was a tough role.
That was.
Mass, we're a little bit contentious, too.
Well, that's what I mean, I think that's probably the only time I see any partisan politics played out.
Vaccinated, unbelievable, felt huge, the vaccination issue.
Yep.
Being tested.
Yeah, all that after crap.
I believe it's going on for years, almost, really, March twelfth.
Two weeks.
Remember what Pop was down in Des Moines that day?
Yep.
I always figured that COVID was the same as the, what was the movie with Tom Hanks and The Money Pit?
Oh, yeah.
There was everything to be. There was everything to be fixed when you do it.
Relate to that movie because I bought one. I said I can relate to that movie because I bought one.
How much are you giving them to where you want it?
Don't ever, yeah, I remember buying a house from an elderly woman who'd lived in it for fifty years.
Oh, she hadn't fixed a lot.
She never moved out.
She never moved out. Her husband passed away two, three years after they moved into it.
Oh.
What's the one owner home?
The one owner home.
It'd be all right because she does most of the fixing anyway.
Well, this woman was eighty something when she.
Oh, shoot.
I went my mother-in-law. We knew what we were getting, so it's not like we didn't know. But I got new windows coming on the fourteen G M.
Be a good timer for them in.
I know. Well, they should have been in like last week when the windshield factor. Cause I got two huge windows that meet. Yeah, my daughter was like, I'd be ghetto and put blankets up.
I thought about putting some plastic up when we were on my back deck, that north wind just.
Yep, that's.
Them double doors, I don't care what you do to them, they don't seal.
I got one facing the north too. And now my trees are getting better. But when I first moved there, you could stand like that, that glass really deflects in and out. I mean, you stand in that glass, it hits you in the nose. It's like, how does that even stay, you know?
My father-in-law, I had an office upstairs that she never, it was exactly the way it left it hasn't moved. I called my walking freezer.
It's always good to have a walk-in freezer.
I wish I did. I'm like.
Buried in a chest freezer.
New windows will do a lot.
Actually, I had to screw up patio table to the patio because it would take flying.
Yeah.
My, my girl flew off my deck. Not this week, I mean, it's been.
Ever have one of your neighbors bring one of your lawn chairs back? Hey, I think this belongs to you. We've been looking for that.
I had somebody bring one of your political signs back.
They're everywhere.
Yeah.
This year.
Yeah, this year I lost a lot.
This year they blew hard.
I lost a lot.
Oh, man, I had, I lost one big.
I feel sorry because your lawn chairs are still there sticking out of the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, break because they wiggle so much. I lost several signs this year. Shouldn't say several, I'll be for each of you.
They disappeared.
They disappeared.
And the plastic ones that go over the wire? They were gone. I actually, the two that I still have left is because I used duct tape on them. Finally, I got duct tape. I'm sending the bill to them both for the use of.
Can't have anything nice outside. It's just like, oh, I'm like, you couldn't. I went through two patio sets before it occurred to me she was right. So women makes a good table.
She hated, she hated the, I had a big tree, maple tree, and this sucker threw out.
The helicopter.
Helicopters and branches and everything else. So I, I just, I break her yard when I did mine, just hurt the side of her yard. And she moved in, she moved in one night, she's out there and I get my dog with me and I just started. I played with it. I hear the dog bark. What the hell is he barking for? I get up and I yell at it. Knock it off. You know, and she says that with dogs, yeah. I've been trying to call you on your phone. I said, why even, I have a phone downstairs and I have one up here. And she starts hitting the dog, dog, and then the dog would sit there and then she would yell, shut up! To the dog, the dog would bark back at it. Going back and forth, back and forth. Knock it off, you know? But that's the tree we just chopped down on all the backyard.
Is that what you just did?
Six and a half foot across.
That will.
I'm at Molebauer didn't do his. We'll survive. They can do it next week, not the house.
I thought this is so we're sworn in, they'd be able to build and all sorts of stuff.
Amy making me sign some stuff in there. They do that already? Do that next week?
What are you talking about?
That stuff that Amy had me signing. Remember what it was? HR stuff I spoke.
It's a long.
Well, in two years, I don't know. Here we are.
Ten fifteen.
All right, let's do it.
Let's do it. Entertain a motion to open a public hearing regarding vacating streets in Kenwood.
I'll make that motion second. Trust gives many motions if she came today.
Jerry moved.
Yep.
I'll say it.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, we are in a public hearing in regards to vacating the streets in Kenwood. Martha.
Welcome.
Well, I have the resolution, the draft resolution and the quitclaim deeds that have been circulated. We've got a couple of phone calls. No issues. We have everyone served and so we're ready to get this done.
Okay, cool.
I don't put anything on the agenda about action of a resolution. I don't know. Well, I don't know. I guess I didn't know there was, I mean, you know.
Is this where we asked for written objections in any?
That is a technicality.
Okay.
But we can have a public hearing and take action next week.
All right, we definitely do that.
We really like having you at our meeting.
Sounds good. I am around.
While we're in the public hearing.
Yeah, due to the public hearing.
We do have. Did you want to address the board on, in regards to Kenwood or you got questions about it or?
No, we are just curious, so. Why we sent out, my mother got it. She was like, well, what's going on? Does it affect us? I don't, we figured it was just because we're in the same section.
Yeah.
Yep, you're trying to get rid of the streets so you don't have to pay them and they can actually no longer be streets?
Correct on both. Yes, if you're within three hundred feet of Kenwood, you've got to notice. And then, yes, this would remove the streets and alleys from being streets and alleys.
So they could farm them or put houses on them or whatever.
I think they've been doing that for a while, but makes it official.
Yeah, when they go to sell, they'll have a clean piece. We all cleaned up for you, not worry about it. Cause I imagine there's a lot of people that can sell that neighborhood.
We literally have a house in the middle of the street.
That's what started it all.
That's what started this whole process.
The sale of that property, they discovered that and so then they had to work the knots out.
About a year already.
Yeah.
March, I think.
Trying to think of when that guy sucked in.
It was, it was March or April somewhere in there. Any other questions regarding that, Greg?
Life did not change at all.
Well, yeah, I thought we figured, whether it was just worrying going.
Sure.
It's not the only place we got like that. We've got about three more would be, two or three more down the road, maybe they can go the same process. And it's not easy to change it, so.
On paperwork for our attorneys.
An engineer.
And our engineer, yeah, Mary, he had a lot of paperwork.
Will, for anyone owning any of these properties, will power taxes go up because of the change?
Yes.
They should.
A little bit because they're acquiring more property.
Okay.
Little bit.
Not if we don't own any of that, we're just wondering what effect it had.
Yeah.
We were involved. I was like, I think it should. Whatever it should affect you, but you just wanted to make sure.
We just want to make sure that everybody around the neighborhood knows it's coming in so they don't have any problems that way too. Nobody ever told me, well, they long time ago set up three hundred feet. And that's what they're, they're going by, so.
You're planning to build something new?
No, 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 no.
They just wanna.
When the town unincorporated back in, I suppose the seventies probably, if not even earlier than that. You know, it was always the town of Kenwood. Well, that just gets unincorporated and falls on the responsibility of county to care for that. And through the original plating of the railroad is it's never, ever been taxed. So it's just cleaning up one of these anomalies like we did with that one piece of of road downward, my garrets, who would just instruct Paul to clean up. That was part of the right of way at one time and now it's not, so it's time to get it back on tax roll. And which will in turn allow that house to be sold. You can't sell something on, something you don't own.
It makes it difficult.
Realtors don't and legal bankers, nobody wants to do, deal with that, so. So we're trying to facilitate, really trying just to facilitate the sale of a house in Kenwood, which in turn will make it a lot nicer.
And get property back on the tax roll. The people have been farming for years and it's been the streets of Kenwood, but they're farming, not even thinking about it. And so put it back on the tax roll. We can tax it. We'll have more revenue for the county because they'll owe the taxes on it, on the, around their farming.
And Paul part pulls, look, is make sure nobody ends up landlocked or anything like that, so. But that's why there's the public hearings and all that.
Any other regards to the public hearing?
I'd make a motion, we.
Go on.
Turn from the public hearing.
A second.
Motion and say to close the public hearing, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and then next week we will take the official action of the resolution.
Know what needs. What the resolution is to go on the agenda.
Sure. Do you want me to email it?
Yeah. Don't forget real followed.
Okay. It would take us ten hours to have a half hour meeting.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you again. Happy New Year.
Jerry made the motion. We did vote on it. Unanimous.
Close the session.
Okay.
All right, so now we're at our ten thirty.
Ten thirty already? Hell, I can't. Aren't there? She's up there though.
She didn't sign it. She was like. My eight-year-old granddaughter in Colorado got her own phone for Christmas. Eight.
Eight years old?
Yep. So say hi, send me emojis. It's okay, it's new. Rules are just about ready to go in place according to her dad.
We had a spare. My, my daughter called, wanted to have a special gift for my. We were trying to find something for her daughter to have.
How old is she?
She got eight.
Eight?
No, she's five.
Five, okay.
She got her the register from out front. I had always had a spare. So I dropped the spare out and she got that for Christmas.
Oh, fun.
Took off, my, my son sent home a little kid's play basket.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Like a grocery store on wheels. It looks like it's real.
Yeah, I see those, yeah.
And she, and she's got a box full of empty things.
Fake toys.
She's opening up her own restaurant. I said, no, we talked her into being a grocery store.
Yeah. We got the cash register that the thing moves on it and they get money comes in. But, you know, it's to a point where nobody waits for Christmas to buy, you know, so you gotta get them something.
Yeah. Eight years old.
Yeah, it's got limitations. I mean, she's got five numbers in it and she doesn't have, she doesn't have the app store. She can't get an app. She can call grandma and grandpa and her cousin. Last night when we were at present, she was just on FaceTime with her other cousin and just like she was in the room with us, just kind of. Like.
She probably knew how to turn them out.
Oh, yeah, like, go ask your dad if he knows how to ride a unicycle because we were talking about it and she'd run and say, dad. Like they're wrong. It's okay, but she texts me about every, what you doing, nothing.
For the website. And these guys can do it next week or something. They want to get a picture.
Yeah, no, this is not. No, I wanna look like I.
But I'm not in a suit and tie next week.
No? I figured it was your new uniform.
No. You guys said we were swearing them in today, so I wanted to look pretty for that.
I'm gonna have to get my bank uniforms back out.
I wanted to look pretty for that, otherwise I'm just.
I wanted to be a bum.
I don't mind wearing a suit and tie, but.
I might wear a skirt.
I usually have something else to do when I leave here.
I think we've got our.
Generally not suit and tie project.
We have our meeting.
We do have new meetings.
Told the birthday boy not to expect me.
Or do you have to take him for birthday dinner?
Well, wherever he wants to go, I guess is the answer.
Who's that?
My husband's seventy-one today.
Oh, today.
Today. I, he's exactly, well, his brother was one in November, so then he comes along in December. I think they put him in a box. Well, that was nineteen fifty-one, you know, I don't think they got all excited. And then a year later, they got his sister.
Oh, my.
Bing bang boom, knock them out quick.
Yeah, another year later, they got another brother.
Oh, God.
Yeah. Patty was in my grade and Jay's a year behind me. Yeah, Phil and Jerry are eleven and a half months apart.
Which one?
John's ten years younger.
He's ten years younger.
Are they?
So whatever, Bush will go with it. And try to orchestrate it.
And Patty, it's a girl.
I like my baggy round. You see all the stuff like. My taxman satisfied.
I've always wondered what it was like at my grand, great-grandparent Rosberg, when you have seventeen kids.
Oh, my.
That's just one after another after, but there was a couple of twins in there. I think so.
My, yeah.
Yeah, Crawford's have seventeen.
Yeah, that's just crazy, isn't it?
You got chores to do, it's very helpful though.
I think my great-grandmother's dad, which would be my great-great-grandpa, I think he was a homestead holic. He drug a bunch of them with him out there, homestead up there around Denner Barrera. And so they all, there was, there were some of them already had ground here in Iowa that went homesteaded for him out there. I don't know how much ground, I don't even know what his last name was. I mean, I'm sure it's in Natalie's notes because Natalie does that family tree stuff. I can't remember it.
My, my sister watched her same thing. Both Finland and, and into Croatia. And, oh, man. And, oh, man, but my father, my mother is one of ten, five girls, five boys. And my grandfather, who was the old language, my mom could speak it, she couldn't speak it, but she could listen to it and understand what they're saying. All the time, as as little kids, we couldn't ever figure out what a conversation was, he had to sit there, but they
I mean, they'd always just deepen history lessons.
My, uh, burning boss.
Oh.
My mother comes here, my mother used to be there, but my father married my mother and then took her to Omaha to open up the Because all the family originally, yeah, a little farm there and they were making houses, they all, each had an area.
That's cool.
So when he died, then my grandmother
Do we have any famous Rosberg?
Chugged the will.
He was, and he wasn't really that famous, he was staying in town. Cool. That's a nice old I was, Ken Lally had a, remember that up on his wall, that old plat map, the nineteen eleven? And I was looking through that one day, just out there, kind of like where grass lives now, maybe a little further to the east yet, was my, one of my uncles, great uncles or whatever, that was one of my uncles, anyway, Frederick Rosberg, that was, I always thought that was pretty cool, I wondered how many of them he didn't see, because I
Jody, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Alright, hey, welcome.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it, how is everyone today?
Good, 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 thanks for asking.
Nice.
How are you doing?
Wonderful, we all had a wonderful holiday weekend, so ready to get back to it.
Yep, I think we've got your package in front of us and let you, let you go, we'll let you run once.
Great, thank you, first off, I wanted to start off by saying that I appreciate you taking the time to let me come and visit with you today. And also for your support in the past, we truly appreciate the support that the proper board has given to us as an agency, it allows us to do all the things that we do. The the money that that your board sends through to us allows us to pull down both state and federal funding to assist the elderly in your county as well as other counties, so it is a crucial thing and we truly appreciate the support, so. Um, just wanted to kind of go over a little bit of that annual information and see if you had any questions on that document before I got started. Was there anything that was a concern or questions? Perfect, so, wanted to let everyone know that this year we had the ARPA funding, which is that American Rescue Plan Act funding that we were able to expand some of the needs in all of the counties in our twenty nine county area. Um, a majority of that went to food coverage, we did some additional meals to those who are home based as well as those that, when the pandemic hit, were unable to get into a congregate site, so we did have significant increases for food insecurity. So our ARPA dollars has mainly been used to expand that food insecurity coverage. We have added some new programs this year and we are covering, it's called Iowa Return to Community. And we are trying to get it into all twenty nine counties, we're in four counties right now, on the Sarah Gordo, Clay, Dickinson and it's all in that same area, I can't remember what other county it was, but we're trying to get it expanded, it was a pilot program for the state of Iowa, we got a very small grant. And we're trying to get it to expand, so this year we are asking the three dollars and ten cents per elderly individual that resides in your county. That is on page two, the your county report, the twelve thousand sixteen dollars. And that will enable us to do a match to pull down those IRTC as well as the federal Title III and the state funding. But the IRTC program, it allows us to cover a small gap in the needs of the the elderly, so, for example, if a person falls and say they break a hip and they have to go into the hospital for a surgical procedure to get that repaired, and then they end up in a nursing home for a little bit to get to the point where they can go home. So after they're released and before they're fully able to do things on their own, there's a, there's a gap. Things like our personal care, homemaker services, that covers some of the things but that doesn't cover all of the the individuals' needs, things like grab bars, wheelchair ramps. They may need meals because they can no longer cook for themselves, they can't stand up. It could be needing to go to the doctor and having no way to get there themselves. So our IRTC program covers those items for ninety days. And if they still need help, at that point, we put them into our case management program so that we can continue to assist them. So that is one of the things that we are working on right now, we did get a small grant from the state of Iowa to continue that program. And we're working with hospitals in all the counties to try to get something going with all of them. We're hoping to get at least a couple more on on the rules for this next fiscal year, but I wanted to give you some some that, some of that exciting news of what we're doing. And then there's social isolation is another one of our big categories, so we've done things like having robotic pets, I don't know if anyone has ever heard of that. But we actually have pets that interact with the individual. They they purr, they they bark, they they move around, they can brush them, they're soft. But they do interact and the more the person interacts with them, the more the robot will respond to them. Um, we also have Grand Pats, which is especially designed, similar to an iPad, especially for for the elderly. Uh, it's got special screens, it's got security that the person can't get into any of the settings to mess things up. Individuals having problems, you know, with cognitive or or anything like that, their family can actually decide who is allowed through, what kind of video calls are allowed, that kind of thing protects them also for email. It does not allow anyone other than the authorized email addresses to send anything through, so spam can't get through or anything like that, so that's a nice program that we do as well. I'll think what else we have. So, um, does anyone have any question on that IRTC or any of the other programs that we're offering right now?
I actually do, our financial report is unfortunately not in color and the grays are a little hard to tell from the darker, which is fine. I just, out of curiosity, how much did you guys receive from ARPA, which one of those pies, pieces of pie is the ARPA funding, do you happen to have that? I can see where ARPA
It is the six hundred and ninety thousand seven oh three. So that would be that peach, well, it's gray, towards the bottom there. Here, let me
It's in order, you think?
Yeah, so it's towards the bottom of that top graph. So six hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and three.
Yep, so our older American is the three million four and then ARPA and then state grants. Okay, alright, that that helps a lot, how many full time employees do you guys have?
We have, well, we have thirty seven full time employees and then we have an additional ten part time employees. Most of those part time employees are meal site employees. We don't have a whole lot of of meal site employees, because most of our meal sites are they're like county or city ran or board ran where they have their own employees and we just kind of move expenses, so.
So then, of the expenses, were, which one of those are the wages then, how does that you got your funding and expenditures, I I don't see Bernie not
We don't break it down to wages, I mean, I could probably get that for you if you would like, what we do is we do it by category. So we have the healthy aging, that is most of the meal site expenses, but that includes all the meals, it includes the home, homebound and congregate meal site expenses, it includes wages. It includes any of our programs, like we have Tai Chi at some locations, matter of balance, walk with ease to try to get some of the elderly folks a little more mobile, to keep them in a good, healthy condition so they can stay on their own and their own
So if I understood that correctly, your wages are in the funding expenditures under the healthy aging, is that right?
The nutrition side is under healthy aging, so HCBS, that one typically does not have any wages, that is our home and community based services. Those are contracts with things like the county public health. It can be an independent agency that covers things like personal care, chore, transportation, so if you have a local bus system, we do help fund that. So that one does typically does not have hardly any wages, only just for the person that handles the the contracts. When they're doing those contracts, those wages go in there, otherwise there's miniscule amount in the HCBS. And that's the one that's the one point two two four. So those are all external contracts that we have with service providers all over our twenty nine county region, so. The lifelong links department, that does include some wages. A majority of our staff is in the lifelong links. That one is everything from caregiver, INA. We have also an older relative program, anything that they do of that is in there. We have multiple caregiver categories, so basically anybody that is in house, that is answering the phones and providing services for case management, IRTC. Any of those programs end up in that lifelong links department, they're the the biggest employee expense area. Other elderbridge programs and services, that one has some wages in it, not a significant amount. But that does include all the administrative staff.
Twenty nine counties, is that right? Is that the right number, twenty nine counties? Twenty nine counties, is that, is that this is the budget, all twenty nine counties? About an eight million dollar budget, is that right?
I'm sorry.
About eight, about eight million dollar budget altogether for twenty nine counties?
Yes.
Yeah, I just had it edited in my head really quick, and the twenty nine counties?
Last year. So typically we have around a seven point eight million dollar budget, but because of that ARPA kind of pushed us over that eight million mark for this year.
Okay.
And they do require still for us to come up with match, so, and that's where yourself come in extremely handy for us, because we are not allowed to pull anything down if we don't have those those dollars that are not tied to the Title III or the state elderly services dollars, so it's
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
That's what I was just looking, I know I'm trying to do math.
What's your request?
Oh, is it on the back here?
No.
Yeah, Y twenty four counting max, fund request, three dollars and ten cents, senior twelve thousand sixteen dollars.
That's the number. On the very back of this, single page.
On the single page.
Three dollars and ten cents.
We're just making sure we got our paperwork in order here.
Yeah.
So your your funding request then for the next fiscal year budget is twelve thousand sixteen dollars, then.
That is correct.
I said, and every year I say this is a heck, you can't, if we could have everything return investment like this, we would
I agree.
Would be a great, great deal, so you guys want to become like fiscal agents for a few of our outfits or?
That would be wonderful.
We really appreciate all you do for our our citizens of Robert County. Some days I wish you could get a little more for some of those.
Yeah, well, that is the plan. We would really love to expand some things to every single county and I know that it's it's tough. Every county's having problems, you know, try to cover all the the needs of their citizens, it's so great. So.
Any other, any other questions?
No, thank you, I I really appreciate it, appreciate what you do, it's really a service that
Thank you.
Elderly folks really need, and so it's very appreciated here in Robert County.
And if anyone has any suggestions on on things, we are always open to ideas, we when we receive ideas that we think might work, we are able to present those to the Iowa Department on Aging and sometimes we can get grants, special grants for projects, and they become pilot programs such as the IRTC, it's now expanding to other triple As. It used to be just our pilot project and now they're expanding it to other, so if anyone has any suggestions for these programs, please send them to me, I would love to hear it.
Jody.
We'll do it.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Yes, happy new year to you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bye.
I would just to
Absolutely. This is the easiest one, they get tough from here on out.
Alright.
Yeah, that's the easy one.
There's no action on that one, so we'll move our ten forty five land management agreement. Copy, everybody got a copy of that last week, we'll have a chance to read through it, I did talk to K R in regards to peasants forever and he would be, thought it would be foolish of them not to include the new property of Stockholm Township that the county just received in the last year.
Just to put new plant by.
Yeah, by the Ices.
Thanks.
I would say we'd do the same as everything else, they would get a certain percentage of the of the CRP payments and for taking care of it.
Well, I tell you what, I drove my wife up there and we went in the back way around him and there, I'll tell you what, I'd never seen it pretty, it's kind of trees all the way around it, they're kind of be climbing.
It was a heck of a conservation project, providing a real life family at one time, so.
So what is the percentage that we give?
I think that's the problem, is it a percentage, I don't know where this dollar amount came.
I don't know either, but I do, I talked to Chris Anastasi out of the Farm Service Agent and our total payment is nineteen thousand eighty seven dollars moving forward.
Say that number again.
Nineteen thousand eighty seven, but, so I mean I need to have some legal work and to include the legal description in regards to that. Legal description, I need to sit down and put this legal description together and see what that all entails, three, six, forty.
So we're taught the that number is a percentage of that nineteen thousand eighty seven.
And we only get nine ninety percent of that.
Jerry Bruce gets ten percent.
And I know of the county farm, I believe we we give Peasants Forever fifty percent of our ninety percent. But the other ones is not.
A heart rug, we get ninety percent of that one, correct?
Right, of all of it, yeah. But the other part, the part that goes to the managers, it's just a set dollar amount and I it'd be easier if it was a percentage. Because if that CRP changes, then we can just keep doing the same percentage.
That's why I wanted to know what that percentage was.
I don't know what the percentage.
Percentage of, and then I thought, well, usually there's a number in front of percentage.
This all started to the fact that we would never get Jerry Bruce Jr. involved because county never really received a payment because then the government would always pay out until there was no money left. And usually governments never run. It would be like once in every six years, you'd actually get a payment. So. Steve found this loophole or somebody did that says, hey, we got somebody else in charge of it to where it would work out. To be fair now, with that being said, that nineteen thousand eighty seven wouldn't be the amount we're working with if we keep all of that ten percent A heart rug. This is just the land management agreement for those that doesn't forever want to take care of. Is that right? Is that how is that how I understand it? Because they don't. Do they do? That's why I should look in the legal description a little bit.
See, because it says twenty seven point eight acres or less.
Yeah. Do we want to include them on include that as part of the goals?
I think it is easier if we have a certain percentage.
Some of this board has been working or done about a lot of things is just keep a percentage.
Right.
That way it's always flexible, always fluid. You don't have to, like, just change a few dates and.
More or less and our.
I don't know what the county attorney's got completed on this. He's got it.
What I feel like we should maybe.
I'll go talk to him after meeting. I'll go talk to him.
Be my suggestion.
The other one we have up there.
I had ninety percent.
It's older township. I don't even know how them. But I don't think any of them are. I don't believe any of them have any CRP contracts. You have the county conservation board is a part of our. Well. I'll go talk to Colin in regards to this after the meeting.
What's that? Should be ten forty five forty five.
Math in my head or his head?
If we did, he had ten Jerry Bruce forty five to accounting forty five to Peasants Forever.
Does it give them fifty percent of our ninety?
Just ten forty five forty five. I've just been studying under Cal.
So it'd be, just so that in my own head going forward, the number we're looking at forty five percent of nineteen thousand eighty seven. Is that the number?
I don't think it'd be that much because we get CRP payment off of the A heart rug on part of that also. So that's.
But that's in that nineteen.
That's in that nineteen thousand. So we have to do some bring out each of them contracts and probably get.
And we take the full ninety out of the out of the farm, the A or red, I mean.
Well, for for me.
Right. We split that eight.
Yeah, I think Jerry Bruce gets ten percent of the A heart red also.
But we don't have to split the other.
No, we don't. We don't.
Why would Jerry Bruce get ten percent of the?
Otherwise we would.
Always we get nothing.
If you don't file, we're left to the last. You kind of try to explain that.
Okay.
Governments are last on the list.
They got pool of money and they go down and check off farmer A, farmer B, they all X, Y, Z, get their money. And then if they have any left, I'm like, oh, Crawford County, all right, we'll give them a little bit.
Okay, all right, see.
But if Jerry Bruce is on there, then we then we're up in the list. And it can be anybody. And they figure that ten percent will cover his time he spends at the FSA office signing papers and receiving phone calls.
Okay, so that's his payment for. I agree with it all.
And he just came along with it because he was renting a farm. So that was part of it.
Yeah.
I think if the farm changed, it wouldn't have to change, but it probably should.
Correct. I would think so too.
I think so too.
Okay, thank you for answering with Chris.
Thanks for asking.
Very lucky here in a couple of weeks. I have to take up.
She's learning to be mom.
Grandma.
Okay, ten fifty five weed commissioner position. That's something we need to get published and in the papers. So.
None are what's. Nice if you want one.
So we can get a weed commissioner.
Do we know what that pays? Is that something that's flexible?
No, I don't. It's fourteen something currently.
It read pretty good.
Well, yeah, and the only reason that I'm asking is, you know, the chances of somebody saying, well, hey, what does that pay?
Fourteen something currently. I mean, like, we get people coming in a lot for that and we could buy up. Our last one never complained about the pain. He just loved.
Mileage for driving around too.
We gave him mileage, yes.
Did he? Didn't he drive a? Did he drive a county vehicle for a while?
For a while he did.
And we give him a wasn't available like a stipend. Phone, right? Didn't we give him a little bit for phone? No?
He's got a phone at his office.
Oh, okay, that's where the phone.
We pay it monthly. He's there or not?
He's out there at the. Where do you want to publish that?
Our local publications.
Three newspapers.
Three newspapers.
We can hang it on the wall downstairs and.
Put them on our website.
Yep, website.
Sounds good.
It'll be April before you know it.
It will be.
And weeds will be popped. Got all the action we needed. We have to vote on that, so.
I don't think so.
It'd be hard to make motion to put it through publications and on.
Justify the publication. Okay, then moved.
I'll second.
Then seconded to.
It's a take action. So I think, you know, we should be in one direction. So we'll make it official.
Publish the weed commissioner application notice on three newspapers and on our website. Waiting for discussion. Go on favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right. Dwayne, did you get some correspondence or not? No correspondence?
No, I asked to actually put on the agenda. A couple of weeks ago, you guys approved Associated as your representative on power negotiations and so forth. And I did not get the sample letter back that I was hoping to. So we'll just move it to next week hopefully. I did have in the last couple of weeks, AT&T has had somebody contacting me, reference renewing their lease and their leases, I believe. It automatically renews for year terms, but the the set date is next next, like, November. So I forwarded that to Associate Engineering to start working on that. So when that gets done, I'm sure they'll bring it forward to you guys to approve the formal approval. Also, in the last couple of weeks, Horizon has contacted me and forwarded that also to Associated. They are wanting to redo their array, most likely update it to six G or whatever they're looking at for the future. Like a year in advance. And so I forwarded that to Tom also. So and keep in mind with that, so Associated does our keeps the structural, the most current structural analysis of the tower on the courthouse tower. So that is everything that's hanging on there. They have a list of how big it is, what's it weigh, what brand it is, all that information, what coax is, what wind resistance it has and all. So with Verizon, they want to redo that with their new equipment. So Associated has a special program. They're not the only ones others that they hang this equipment on there, put half inch ice on it and blow seventy mile an hour wind against it for testing for loads and sway and stuff like that. But so, but to make a long story short, what we do is Tom is Associate Engineering bills Horizon on our behalf for that structural analysis, like about three thousand dollars. Then they will pay us and Tom will bill us that amount. Because keep in mind that Associated works for us. It represents the the county's interest. So he does work for us. So we're the ones that need to build, but they take care of it. I think that's it on college.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
So we get a table.
Yeah, we'll just table.
Yeah, so that would be table it till next week for now. Hopefully we'll have that.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Set us on the input.
What?
Okay, well, before we adjourn, I would just, once again, like to say thank you too for being on the board, serving with you guys. You guys are always welcome to come back and visit us. We'll be here on Tuesday morning.
Don't worry, I'm not losing your numbers.
So it's been an honor to serve with you guys. So appreciate it.
I would say the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I hope you always call me and tell me what I need to do.
Well, enjoy them grandkids and traveling and whatever vacations and stuff that you've been putting off. Go have fun. For that, I entertain a motion to adjourn unless.
Go ahead.
It's yours. You're you secondary.
They're moving the second is that we adjourn all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right.
Yeah, actually, I'll tell you the truth about those. I'll go take care of the flowers for mom. And I was like, hold on, is hell freezing over right now? He's hanging forty eight years for him to be the one to do it. Oh, my goodness. Don't read the card because it's a tearjerker stuff just in case you want to sit here and cry.
I had a bad day.
You have red eyes most of the day.